All right, as it is seven o'clock, I will call this meeting to order of the Board of Education Meeting of the Rhode Island Olivia Lickley Independent School District number twenty-five thirty-four. And I'll begin with our mission statement. The mission of the Bold School District is to provide all learners in the Bold community an education designed to develop the creativity, character and com- character competence and skills essential to flourish in a changing global society. And with that, we'll go to our agenda here, and there is one addendum that was added under new business. You have it at your received this afternoon. You also have it at your station tonight in hard copy. And it is new business number nineteen designation of identified official with authority or Iowa for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. So that will be added under new business. With that, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Bookdo.
Motion is made by Bookdo.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bowen. Any discussion or questions?
I got a question, Joe. Some of these contracts we have here that we're supposed to approve today, we just received those and we haven't even had time to look at them. We just put those off till next meeting. Because one we just got at three-thirty this afternoon.
The one was in the packet.
Right.
Right.
But they're supposed to be somewhat alike, but we didn't even have time to compare, is what I'm saying.
Okay. I guess then we're gonna have to call a special meeting too because they've already, how long do you need? I mean, that's what I guess we, what we need to know because they've already approved.
Why, like for look at them?
No, I know, I know, just I wanna know how mu- how long? I mean, like, like a week?
There was a short notice and if you were gonna roll that second one.
Do you all have time to look at it from three-thirty this afternoon? So we could be approving something we haven't looked at.
Right, I was, I was, but, okay. It was something where they, they were gonna try to see if they could even get it voted on in time, and they weren't sure if they could get it voted on in time. And they, they wanted to get it on the agenda, so they worked to get ahold of all of their people so they could vote. So that's, it's on there because they wanted to try to get it on there. So if you don't, if you don't agree with it, then yeah, we could set up a meeting for another time and we'll come back before next month. I would do it before next month though.
Right, and I agree with you, but I just felt like...
Yep, and that's fine.
If they're, these are two...
So are we pulling both of them off?
A lot of changes in the contracts.
We're pulling, we're pulling both off or because you, you received the one?
Yeah, but if you're comparing the two, you just wanna just, I'd rather just pull them both off and then look at them both same time.
We're approving, I mean, they're two separate contracts, so we have to pull them both off. I, I just, cuz, okay.
I would, I would.
All right.
I'd like to do all, just so we can kinda compare the two.
All right, so that's...
The only thing by doing that, what you're doing, there is some recto pay that is involved with this, so you're delaying that for another period of time.
For like a week or something?
And so, well, but still, I think the, both these groups and the negotiators that were on the committee can, I think, verify what I'm saying. And I think they both were very, we had some very positive negotiations on those two groups that sat down and they worked out the contract and the details and really it was positive. And so, I think when you have that situation when you're negotiating, that's a very plus and, and it's not that one side is gaining more from the other side or vice versa. It's just that I think they all came together with a goal of getting it resolved. I think it's a very respectable settlement for the time being right now, and I think they're, they're looking at the, what's best for the district as well as their own union groups. So I think they're very, it's very fair. The one, yes, it, it got out late and that was the second round of negotiations we had with that group, so.
They actually, the second group said that they would, to put it on, and then if they couldn't get it done, they'd just take it off.
But they did get it approved, right?
But they did get it done, so they worked hard to contact all their members in the summertime, so it's, it's up to you guys. If you wanna do it, then it's next week or something.
We're allowed to approve something that I...
So like next Monday? So we can make a commitment to come back next Monday? That's...
On the fifth of July? It's a national holiday.
Okay, so then, okay, so then, I can do Tuesday night, but I can't do it until after seven-thirty.
I have to check my schedule.
Yeah. The girlier in the day works for s- other people. Yeah. So... I'd like to get a date set up though because this needs to get taken care of. And I apologize for the lateness of all of it.
Yeah, Wednesday?
Is that enough time though? I guess that's... Yeah, Thursday? Would that, would that be enough?
At seven-thirty.
Okay. If I can have four, if I can have four people here, that's really what I need to, you know, to have a forum to...
If it's Thursday, I should be back.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is Jamie back on Thursday?
I'll check with Jamie.
I think she'll be back Wednesday night.
I think, yeah, I think they're back.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Seven?
Seven-thirty. Okay, so... With that... Just trying to figure out how to do this, Robert's Rules of Order-wise because we amended it to pull both those contracts off. Can I go back to you guys and ask you if you're okay with that?
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, you're okay with your motion and your second? All right. So we will pull both of those contracts off. I will, we'll have a special meeting, which Dory will post for seven-thirty on Thursday. All right, anything else? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We'll try to keep it short and sweet so you can go and watch the beautiful rain out there. So I guess we can have it as long as we want cuz it's, no, it's great, it's raining, it's wonderful. So moving on to public forum. Our public forum is placed on the agenda for regular board meetings during this part of each regular school board meeting. Up to ten minutes of time will be allowed for district constituents to address the school board. Each person or topic may have up to two minutes of time. This is a time of listening by the board. And if anybody would like to speak, please let me know. I guess I would just maybe like you to come stand over here so you can be on camera. But if anybody would like to speak, now's the, now's the time. No takers? All right, we'll move it along then. All right, consent items. We only need one motion to approve our consent items. And what we have this month are consent items is approving bills for payment, approving the minutes from the May twentieth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting and the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one's regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion is made by Bowen. Seconded by Bookdo. Any questions or discussion on any of those consent items?
And the register, I have some questions.
Okay.
I need to, go ahead.
All right.
So I noticed going through there, um, I don't know if anyone asked it too.
Okay, which one are you on?
I'm on page nine of twenty-six. Now it says receipt change.
Okay, on which though is it?
Oh, the detailed payment for...
Okay. Okay.
So there was a check, um, earlier in the year in January written receipt change for, um, the envelopes and stuff for the, for the election. And now it took till June to pay for the ballots. Is there a reason why they delayed that invoice or was that just in which forgotten to be paid? It says they're all for the...
Do you know, Joy?
We didn't get the invoice for receipt change until late.
Okay, so this is a second invoice then?
Yep.
All right. I was just curious why that was so, so late. And then I do have another one, if you go to page thirteen of twenty-six. Um, it says cash and it was for the state golf meal. Is it just me or I don't understand the, it's like seven-hundred-ninety-three dollars for meals. However, it says nine meals times eleven people times eight dollars a meal. So the, if you got nine meals, you have eleven people, did two people not eat and they're eight dollars a meal and it came to seven? I don't understand how they figured that.
Must be...
Same one underneath it, you got... Why is it, why is it under cash?
Yes. And then two avenues.
Some schools do a stipend where they just give the people the money straight out, and our school does it where they bring receipts back and they get reimbursed based on their receipts.
But then they put it under cash?
They use their, like in Dan Gross's case, the head coach for the boys' golf, he paid for it with his own credit card cuz he doesn't have a school credit card. And then he gives them the receipts and then they pay him back.
Right. So does that not get charged to like the, the boys' athletic fund instead of just taking out the cashes and they're like a fund then that will reimburse them, you know?
These are really good questions, may, maybe should've asked a little earlier cuz like I don't have, I don't have Mr. Flann here.
I was gonna say if Derek was here, he could answer it.
That's...
But I know they actually...
He would've been a good one to give a call to.
The cash, so Brittany does the PO for the, the check for cash and she goes to the bank, cashes it, and then actually gives the cash to the coach and then whatever they don't use comes back.
Any other ones? I, I don't know if we can answer...
These are specifics in, for each one of these bills and so that's, I think if we got a question on there, I know there's a lot much, so much per meal, per pupil, for each participant, so I know that's in there. But whether it's nine meals for eleven people...
So I'm guessing it's three days.
Yeah.
So it's nine meals a day times eleven people times eight dollars a meal, is what I'm guessing.
So nine meals a day times eleven people.
No. Nine meals total, like during three, so three meals a day is what I'm, yeah. It is, it is, does seem to be confusing.
And then one more, um...
Okay.
Um, another one on page nineteen. This job, age two, full-time superintendent, eight hundred fifty-four dollars.
That was, that was, um, the ad that we put in the newspaper and that was requested to be put in the newspaper. So I know that one.
Okay, and then, um, page twenty-one. Where it has, um, Muggs Lawn and Land State Service and for nineteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Is there a reason why we're paying, um, Muggs when we have...
They, I think they do the football field. I, I don't know if that's what it is, but...
So how come our staff is still just don't get football game?
I, I don't, that's...
Their, the schedule doesn't allow that and that's, that's been something of the past practices that they maintain that part of it, so. And, and that's in it. It gets down to lawn mowing and who can operate that, plus the wear and tear of the lawn mowers. So I, I think it's been in the past is that it's financially better off to hire this group to maintain the football field for what it is. Do you know any more, Jim?
No, I, I remember I asked Derek about it two years ago and I, I remember he said that Muggs gives us quite a deal.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know what a deal is.
And then my last one, um, is on page twenty-four, twenty-six. The check for the State Mary School for counselor fees for visiting members for seven-thousand five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. What are those counseling fees for and do we not have a counselor here that we had hired or...
That I can...
Do you know, Joe?
I'm... And I, yeah, I can't. I can't. I know, I know why the counseling would be happening, I don't know much about... Why it's being paid over there.
That was great.
I'll just grab one more. The Reality Works, Jim, do you know what that's for?
What page is that on?
Um, page twenty-three. There's like no baby care, five-year warranty, even small infant soft carrier.
Yeah, that was a grant that would be, it's being paid for by, uh, it's for, for our tax classes, child development, and it's being paid for by Perkins. So we, but we pay for that and then Perkins reimburses us.
It's a Perkins grant that that's, that comes out, so that's what Mr. Menness talked to you about.
Anything else?
I have one more, page fifteen. Fifteen where it says NHS donors and water. Doesn't the NHS have a fund for that? Or why are, why are they... I thought the NHS sounds like the Osby Fund or something like that.
We don't know what it's for, do we? I mean, for what though? I mean... Yeah.
Uh, they did their, uh, their induction ceremony and they just, they don't, they don't, NHS doesn't have any kind of budgets.
Suppose they would have to, they would have to fundraise, and I don't think they do that many things where they're asking for money, I don't think.
It's the community service.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Before we approve the consent items? All right, hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Approve Grant Farr as a summer custodian at the Olivia campus for eight dollars and twenty-one cents an hour for three-hundred-and-twenty hours during the twenty-twenty-one summer. Motion is made by Bookdo.
Seconded Benson.
Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion?
Is this a new position that we're adding another one or, or did somebody leave and we're replacing one of those that we approved earlier?
I don't think anybody le- left because we would've been approving a resignation.
It's included in the...
So we need another one for help?
Usually, I, usually there's...
No, we didn't have, it's just...
Usually there's three.
There's always been three and you would be number three.
Oh, man.
Cuz we had approved two last month, so... All right, any other questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number two, approve Alexis Scott as an assistant volleyball coach beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, pay level B of the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one EA Master Agreement. Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Bowen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number three, approve Amy Schmidt as a part-time business manager assistant effective June fourteenth of twenty-twenty-one.
So moved Benson.
Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Bookdo. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing no questions or discussion, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number four, approve the resignation of Mallory Mertens, ninth grade girls' basketball coach, effective June seventh of twenty-twenty-one. Motion, motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Jacobs. And any questions or discussion on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number five, approve the resignation of Josh Myers, Joshua Myers, assistant cross-country coach, effective June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one. Motion is made by Bowen, seconded by Bookdo. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number six, approve a one-year leave of absence for Brenda Prokosh beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Bookdo. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number seven, approve the resignation of Melissa Sagetall, board member, effective June tenth of twenty-twenty-one. Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Bowen. Any discussion or questions?
Thank you. Huge thank you. She was here for some rough stuff. It's not easy on the person. So I appreciate the time she put in.
Yes. All right. We will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports, superintendent's report.
First item is the legislative session and everybody knows that they're in a special session right now and so they're working on that, but, um, pretty much the led, or the educational bill has been pretty well received by the legislature and that's kinda in place, but still, until it is signed and till put in law, it's, it's still questionable. I'll be talking about, later we'll be talking about our proposed budget, what we were anticipating and, and the legislature has come forward with a much better opportunity for us and, and some it's at the, the state itself has been financially in a lot better state right now and I think they, they feel that they can put more out on the formula and that's what we're hoping for. Uh, what we're looking at is one, maybe one-on-one, one percent a year for the biennium and right now, the first year is it's at two-point-four-five and for the second year of it is, is at two percent. And that's a real positive for public education. So it's, isn't putting money in the bank, I'll guarantee you that. It's, when you look at what inflation is doing, what is insurance is doing and everything else, uh, you know, that's an area that we can continue falling down and the most secure place of getting it is through the formula, yeah, basic formula. And so we're pleased with it and we hope that they will continue with their, with this and then pass it now this, hopefully this week. They've gotta get it done by the end of the week or by June thirtieth or they won't be paying any bills. And it's kinda interesting as we work through this time of, even the state department put out a week ago, last weekend about a, a long explanation of what was happening with the state right now and if the state would, would not settle, what it would mean. And they were cautioning districts to make sure that they get every, the billing correctly into the state as soon as they could so that if there be a shutdown after the first, then we would be shorted our dollars. So it's kind of a scary time, but, uh, you know, I think there, it seems like they're, they're coming together and getting a consensus with what they're, they're trying to approach, so that's a good sign and so I hope they continue. So they're supporting again through the biennium for two years is the Volunteer Pre-K Program, which Bold has tried to get into that program ever since it originated and every year we get turned down because the funding is not there for it and, and that's really an inequity because districts that got in the first round are still in it and they're still receiving those funds for preschool kindergarten, which to me, that's, uh, that's not a good situation to be in, especially if your school that has a good preschool program, but we do not get the funding for it, so. Um, they did put money towards a special education cross-subsidy program, which is a, that's another program or situation in special ed where, where we're supposedly promised reimbursement for our special ed costs and neither the federal nor the state has ever kept up with it. And so that ends up being a local expense. And so they're gonna add some more to it that help reduce it, but, um, they've got a long ways to go and the same with the English learner. That also is a cross-subsidy and they're gonna reimburse, put more money into that program, but, um, and that's when you look at state funding is, there's a lot of those places where the program is created and supposedly the funding is gonna be there, but as soon as it gets tight, the funding is pulled. And then for ever get reimbursed, it's, takes a long time and, and especially that is, is one area that is, it's expensive. It's a program we're required to have and we wanna serve those people, those children, so it's not a question of whether we do it or not. It's all the fun, all just gonna be funded. And so until the state picks up their tab and the federal, uh, department picks up their tab, it's gotta come out of the local budget. And so that to me is not right, then that, but that's the reality and, uh, I don't know the day that ever gets corrected will be interesting because it's, it's really a one-sided now. You know, mandate something, but then they don't finance it and, and so that's kinda comes down the pipe to public education. And so that just comes back to be a responsibility of the locals and it becomes the residents of the district's responsibility. And so we have to, we have to pay for that. But it's much more positive than it looked a month ago or two in what we're projecting, the proposed budget, we're, we're projecting one percent. And so that'll help out in our budget, but, uh, like I said, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough road with the funding, I forget the revenue. So I don't know if you've got any others with the legislative, it's been a long battle and so, but I do think they're, they're gonna come together and get a bill before the end of the, before the end of the month. Negotiation up then, update, I, we spoke briefly about that earlier, but we did come together, both groups. Uh, the custodial staff was just minor, only basically was salary and I shared that with you. And then, but with the other one, there was more because they were combining groups and so brought in our administrative assistants with our, our second principal secretaries and the secretaries in, in offices and so that's another different one that has not been in with that group before, so, so it took more time for the union rep and the district to come together on that one. So that one was a little more work, but again, I think, um, both groups came together and, and talked very positive, had a good, at-the-table discussions and, and so I think it went very well, so, so we'll come back to those approvals later this week. But, um, again, the committee was supportive of that, of the settlement and so I think that's for other members that weren't at the table, that's the people you need to converse with and, and see what the things were that were brought out and so. It was a very positive negotiation session, I think you should feel good about that. You've got employees that, uh, I think are good employees of the district, they do a good job and they know and they've, since I've been here, they, they understand the financial position and they've, and they want the district to get that general fund balance turned around and coming back and it is, but it's a, it's a long process and I think they're very respectable for, for the district and so I compliment them and it, uh, and so I think it went very well and I think they felt good and so. So I think it was a good sign. I don't know if the committee, they wanna say anything or not, you know? Bowen? Uh, and then C is a summer and fall updates. Uh, it's just started this summer, but the district has to be looking at the fall of what, what the expectations are. Coming off of a COVID year with pandemic, it's been a tough year for everybody involved, from students, uh, to the parents, to staff...
Hey Lindsay, just a minute.
It's been a... Lindsay?
I just put her on hold.
Okay. We're gonna bring, uh, for our discussion with the budget, Lindsay's gone right now, but I asked her to be, uh, involved with the discussion of our, our budget cuz she's the one that puts that together and... Involved with the discussion of our our budget, because she's the one that puts that together and she, it's important to do that, so. Anyway, the summer and fall updates, it's just that uh we're ready to move forward with the planning. And we needed to put together a a COVID nineteen preparedness plan for the summer slash fall of twenty twenty one and that's. It's came through the legislature that we we had to do that. The funding, it's tied to funding of our S R funds, which we can use, have a two year timeframe to use those funds. And so that's part of it is to putting that plan together, and so the. The staff will be looking at that, the community members, but you can look at that, you have it in the packet, it's included in your packet and we. We'll get to that later, so anyway, it's um. Moving forward, then the other thing that I think for the summer is that we did receive a grant that the early childhood. Program and thanks to Derek with his work with that, with the staff there, they they did, they were. You were able to utilize that grant at forty eight thousand and they're able to expand it to uh. Doubling the number of students we're servicing and it's intended to support for what feel is a loss for. With COVID and everything with what we've dealt with, so. So that's a, the staff went along and and increased the time there and they doubled them. Three weeks to four weeks and so and going to four to four and a half hours a day. The students are here every day, plus they get their lunch and so it's a really a. Real positive for our early childhood programs, so so we're happy with that. Staffing needs, probably the the thing that the principals are looking at right now is the need for a special ed. We have two special ed openings, staff openings and. They're tough to fill right now, there's not graduates that are in special ed programs and so. We had two resignations, so we need to look at filling those, but so that'll be two tough ones to fill, okay? And I'll end with that, we've got Lindsay.
I know, I need to get through these other reports though. Elementary principal's report, I Brett was here. You don't have anything? Okay. You'll stay around after the meeting if anybody's got a question, okay. High school principal's report, I know he also didn't have a report, but. We have a little brag thing, somebody's license came today. Superintendent license, two day, date of issuance is two day, so. So congratulations to Mr. Menton. Uh activities report included in the package. And Mr. Plan is here. Does anybody have any questions on?
Um the fall schedule is online now. We picked up a couple of classes that we had lost when Tula opened up. That are coming back here, um our normal program of youth stuff in the fall. And then um Jason Phillipic, the shift coordinator with the county is offering a disc ball course in the fall, so. We're starting to get some of that stuff, but it's difficult to program over the summer because there's just not a lot of people looking for it.
Alright, anything else from Mr. Plan? Alright, moving on to um school board discussion, if anyone has anything to discuss. Okay.
I'm questioning about the mulch pile in Bird Island that's been sitting there, that was for the cited for the playground, it's still sitting there in the heap. Uh I think the kids think that was meant for them just to play on now, so I was wondering when that's gonna get spread out. And then um I still don't see the new basketball hoops for the court that's there. Wondering when they're coming.
I know the mulch is there. Probably it's having the time to get over and get it done, and so, but I'll find out. And the basketball hoops then are, Derek, do you know any more?
That was discussed at our facility.
Custodial staff has been busy, so I I I'll I'll mention it to them and.
Do we have hoops available just to put up or do we gotta buy some?
I think we'd have to buy some.
What does that come out of? What pays for that?
Let's talk to Denny, find out, because it was probably come out of, yeah. I don't know if he's got a plan for that, but I think Denny should be a part of that conversation, so, yep.
So that's.
Alright, anything else under school board discussion?
And they were, I know the concern was mowing and picking up the basketball that. Done after that.
Okay, uh pool reports, there's two included in the packet and I don't, you guys have not met? Pool board or have you met? Okay. So if you have any questions. We will please talk to Tracy about any questions you have. So, moving on to new business, number one, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty proposed budget. And it's enclosure number one, and we have Lindsay here, direct from vacation to talk to us. Hi Lindsay.
Hi.
Thanks for taking the time to discuss budget with us, proposed budget, so.
No problem, thanks for let me do it by phone.
No problem. So go ahead, floor is yours.
Alright, okay, so first of all, I will start with when you do the adopted budget um in the spring for the next. Following fiscal year, um there's always assumptions that need to be made, because there's obviously unknowns um going into next fiscal year. Especially on years like this year where we're waiting for things to get settled, um. And kind of see where the formula is gonna be, um where other funding purposes are coming from. Um that has been settled now, but obviously it was uh just settled and it was settled before the budget was already done. Or sorry, after the budget was already done and before it went in the board packet. Um so what I'm gonna start with is you guys have um in the board packet, you have buy fund, the revenue and expenses. Um so we'll start going through the assumptions that are in there and then I'll kind of show you where it looks like as in the fund balance or kind of the. Financial outlook of what the district will be like at the end of fiscal year, um according to this adopted budget. So for the general fund, the biggest fund, um. What we did was we were conservative because we didn't know where the state was gonna land, there was zero percent thrown out there and there was two percent thrown out there from each party. So to be conservative, our formula increased only by one percent. Which now we know is gonna be two point four five for fiscal year twenty two, so uh. Better outcome than than the adoption budget, which we're really excited about. So the formula is at a one percent increase compared to where we were at in fiscal year twenty one. Enrollment at five hundred and ninety four, so that's also something kind of looking at um one of five year history, so my guy will start to keep that a keep and kind of look at. Enrollment. Um it has extra two funds in there that we know the allocation that we're gonna get now, um and that's four hundred and eighty eight thousand four seventy eight. Um and when you take all the care money that we got last year, make comparison, last year it was three hundred and six thousand two seventy four, just kind of an idea of where we were. From last year to this year for the federal fund. And then when I look at the other miscellaneous revenue, um and other smaller departments. You kind of look at a five year look back and and the type of accounts and kind of budget it that way. So those are the revenues for the general fund. For the expenses, um for payroll, obviously we adjusted contracts, um and what the master units say. Um we're down one F T E in the surplus draft, so that's included into the budget. Um for the L T F M, a long term facility maintenance, there's a ten year plan that goes to the board each July. Um so my budget is based upon that ten year plan that was approved last July with some fluctuations um that have come up. Um during the year. And then when I look at utilities and on and other non payroll items, I kind of look at the same as the revenues or I look at the five year history and. The type of account and I budget based upon that, or any other known things that might be coming up. Um so move on to food service, um food service again, we know now that we're gonna be operating under the summer food program like we were. This year where everyone is free, so you can tell like our revenues compared to last year are very similar. Um in expenses, we adjust to contracts for the payroll side of it and then for the food and supplies. I increased from last year just because I, you know, I think prices might go up some and um. With the distance learning last year, there were fluctuations um in the consumption and the number of serves, so. I have expenses up and I and I know that it's conservative, but I wanted to make sure that I was conservative, um not knowing exactly where the prices are gonna be. For the community service fund, um I am making the assumption that we're gonna have a full year of tuition. Um and no distance learning for the little warriors. Um in that summer rec and other community and programs are gonna be back up and running as they were in the past. For the expenses, it's the same as the other funds where you adjust to contracts for the payroll item. Um and then kind of look for supplies in other non payroll areas, what we had in the past and the nature of the account. The debt service fund, we will no longer have as the um loan that we had for the parking lot is paid off. So there'll be no levy coming in and no payment going out anymore. Um the pool fund is based upon the budget that's approved from the pool board. And then the scholarship fund is um interest revenue and other payments coming out to pay off scholarships. So you have your revenue for the interest coming in and the other payments that are not our scholarships and then also the scholarship payments going out to the student. So moving on to the next document is our fund balance and that kind of shows you the healthiness of the district and um where we're gonna be. Um when we end fiscal year twenty two based upon this budget. Um and so like for the general fund, we were showing a deficit, deficit spend about seventy six thousand. But some things I want to point out for you guys is that um if you kind of look at our reserve, we're using restricted dollars up first. In one of the bigger areas, um that we're gonna have some bigger expenses in is our L T F M area, because we plan to. Do a roof project um based upon that plan, so like that is causing our expenses to go up compared to revenue. But we have the reserve there, so if you actually look at the unassigned, where there's more discretion on what can be spent out of there. Um our unassigned is actually going up by seventy seven thousand, which is that, that's exactly what we want to see, we want to build that reserve up to make sure that we're healthy. Um so with that being said, even though we have a small deficit spend that's being approved tonight. Um it's in the right category because we have some projects in there that are causing expenses to to go up, but we have the reserve to pay for it. Um and then with food service, I'm being conservative both on the revenue and expenses side, so that's why you see. A little bit of a decrease there, uh and the community service fund is based upon where we've been the last. Um many years there, um so there's not a significant change in revenue and expenses compared to the past. So anyone have questions for me?
Yep, Teresa Monap has a question for you.
Okay.
Sure.
So I was looking at this proposed um. Budget that we have and um overall we'll be deficit spending four hundred and twenty three some thousand dollars.
Yep, and with your proposed budget, first of all, you're gonna be conservative and also like I explained. You can't just look at the revenue and expenses for the current year, you have to see how we're spending it and we're using reserves to spend. Some of that money down, so um we know we need to do a roof project, so that roof project's built in there. So you have higher expenses coming in, but you have those reserves to pay for it.
Okay, so for the roof project, is that explain non-suspendable fund one, other committed fund one and other assigned fund one?
So those, that is um uh government, the G A S B fifty four is actually the. Um the G A S B that that's under and basically the um non-suspendable is. Things that we we have to record it when we have inventory or prepaid or um. Certain balance sheet items like that, we have to record a non-suspendable for that, so that's an accounting. Um standard that we have to follow, so we have no control over it, that's mandated um by um. Being a government entity by the um G A S B standard.
So that's eighty six thousand dollars designated for just to sit there, that eighty six thousand dollars?
So that fluctuates depending on what we have sitting for items like prepaid or inventory items. So what they're saying is that those items are um non-suspendable items, we have them sitting out there. Um on the balance sheet, so it's an it's an entry that I have to make each year to tie to those non-suspendable areas. So it's not um it's what they're saying is there's money out there that is for things that are not. For spendable for this year.
How about other committed and other assigned?
Yep, so other committed is for designated, so that was approved by the board in the past for different projects. Uh and the only way that those can be cut is if um or released is if the project that it was committed for. Takes place or the board doesn't act an item to release it, that's all board control. Um no other way, no other way can it be taken care of.
So projects such as.
For our policy, so this is the district policy and this also has to be followed per G A S B standards. The other assigned is based upon administration's discretion and those were set aside for also other um. Projects that the district wanted in the past, um but because of finances, so far those projects have not happened. So those funds have been sitting out there, um and they only fluctuate a little bit um depending on some of the funds set aside for like other post. Retirement funds, so when we have those, we can use those assigned funds for that, but other than that, they're set aside for a specific purpose. And because I don't know if that purpose is gonna happen during the year, the proposed budget doesn't show up using those funds.
Okay, other, under, under the other committed, the seven hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, you said that's for projects that the board has to approve. What type of projects are we talking, like repairs for building?
Um uh I I'll have to go back to the list, but it was set aside for, it wasn't necessarily repairs, but actually big projects like H VAC and. Um I think part of it was like a um update for the wrestling. Um and there was a couple other bigger projects, they're not repair and maintenance, but actual projects that they've put the money aside for.
I think that that's that area is for a specific project, it's not um and it's designated by the board.
Right, so. But yeah, like, we don't know what it is, right?
I know, but that's what she'd have to go back and designate, it's been in that fund for some times.
I was just curious what type of projects.
Right.
That was.
Major projects.
I'm curious about that too. It is.
One time, I know there was one time there was a boiler in there and but I don't know. That's been years ago, it's.
So we, projects such as.
And one is one thing that um that's hard about that is this, that stuff was um committed we before my time and so. I've tried to gone back through previous business managers' records um to try to figure out exactly. Um the specifics of it and I have general um. Description, but not necessarily um what I had hoped to find as exactly what the specific project was, so. I think that's just one of those, one of the areas that I think in the for the future that. Um at the board level, because they're committed at the board level, we would just decide how those funds.
I agree.
Upon the descriptions I get, what those funds should, whether we want to release them or we want to recommit them for. A specific purpose and we don't know exactly um the clear intent for besides a general description of H VAC. Or a general description of wrestling room, you know, that type of stuff, so I I just don't feel like we have specified enough details nor. Um the individual that maybe we're here that would have known that, so I think because of changes, um that's just something that. Um the board would want to look at in the future.
Yes.
I was just gonna ask, so if we release those funds, then how specific is it, is it? Is it, what is it meant for, just projects, it can be, we decide?
Could probably have to decide that.
Yeah, well, the thing is, you can choose how you want to do it. You could release it and it, they wouldn't be committed at all. So then they would go back into your fund balance, or what you would do is recommit them um, for a specific purpose. So we would want to make sure that, you know, it kind of aligns with trying to get our finances back in order or something that um, we know um, is gonna be a higher priority coming up here in the next year or two.
How long is that seven hundred and sixty-five thousand that's sitting in there?
Well, um, it, it was higher, but there's specific projects that have been done on it since I, before I came here. So, but, so since I've come here, um, there's only been a small amount removed from there. So it, it's been there for probably, I don't know when it was committed. I feel like it's been committed for um, eight to ten years. Um, but the, the amount has decreased from what it used to be.
But you need to be careful, you know, that, that's a fund there that is, you're protecting to when projects come that you don't have control over and all of a sudden you've got it.
But we have to know what those projects, what's allowed, right?
But you can, what I'm saying is be careful of spending that money because that is part of your fund balance. And once it's gone, you're, you don't want to end up in a deficit spending situation and, and go in SOD. And then uh, everything will be dictated for you, so you've got to protect that. So that's there when there comes, uh, and you don't, you've got to-
But this projected budget right now is in deficit of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, right there. Which brings me to my next question is um, I had a conversation with somebody today talking about our ESTR funds. And I found out that ESTR one, we received a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. ESTR two funds, we received four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And ESTR three, one million, ninety-seven thousand, fifty-one dollars. I am wondering, where are those funds? And where were they put?
Allocated.
Yeah, allocated.
Yeah, so those funds were recognized last year, and I did mention that in my presentation earlier tonight. I told you the total that we had in twenty-one compared to what's coming in in, in twenty-two. Um, and those funds were spent on PPE. They were spent on additional custodial supplies that we needed for sanitizing. They were spent on um, extra time that was needed because of COVID or unbudgeted time because of our, the current situation we are going through. Um, it was spent on technology. All those uh, one-time purchases that uh, COVID um, brought forth, um, is how those funds are spent.
So we went through like one point five million on that?
Whoa, whoa, no, 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 we did not have one point five million. We had three hundred and, um, let me get the exact number for you. So we had three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, twenty-eight thousand of it, I believe, twenty thousand of it, I believe, is, that came from the county. And that was designated specifically for nursing and social worker time. Um, and then the rest of it was care's money from, that flowed through from the state. Um, and those were, those were the items that I just discussed that we spent those monies on.
What about the one million, ninety-seven thousand, where did that go?
I don't know, uh, we never got one million, I'm not sure where you got that from.
Where are you getting your numbers? I got mine from Joe Stensel from MSBA. He told me to put down six twenty-eight, twenty-one, that I talked to him at two twenty-four PM. And he said, these are the numbers that you've got.
So that, he could be ca, he could be talking about the future funds that we're gonna get in ESTR two and ESTR three funds. But in fiscal year twenty-one, the funds that we have are three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. But I don't, I don't know, in total, when you add them up, we might be at the one point five. I'd have to go add, um, I have to go look to see what are estimated ESTR three funds are gonna be. Right now, those are estimated for us. Um, and so when you add those all together, that could be where we're gonna be at. But what you have to remember is these are one-time funds, so you can't use these one-time funds to um, pay for things that are ongoing. So you need to really put a committee together and look at things that you can do to help your budget in the future, such as one-time purchases for technology or curriculum or um, other ten-year um, plans that you have in place. Because if you spend it on reoccurring items, once those money goes away, and they're gonna go away. And we all know that looking at, in conversations that we have, looking at the budget, that um, our cost of living is not keeping up with the um, general education formula that we get in per ADM. That once those funds go away, if you're not careful, schools are gonna be in real budget trouble. So that's why with those one-time monies that we're getting in, um, we need to be really thoughtful and, particularly responsible and put a committee together and see what we, what we should do to implement things um, and use this on one-time purchases. So that when those monies go away, um, we don't have expenses that are gonna stay there and have to figure out how to budget for them and pay for them.
That's exactly true, and I think that's why it's so important when we're at the finance meetings, when we ask those questions, that's what we're looking for. Are those numbers like that? I have one more thing too, Lindsay, if you could explain this to me, this part is um, I just need it to be explained and maybe the rest of the board does too, or maybe they just get it and I don't. You have the breakdown of the expenditure budget sum for May thirty-first. Well, I went through from December twenty-twenty, since that's the first stuff I've got until May twenty-first. And I took December, March, and May. And the reason I took December and March is because those annual budgets matched up until that time. But then May came around and the budgets, the annual expenditure budget changes. So that part's confusing to me because I think if you have an annual budget and expenditures, you, you try to stick with them, so as herein, you can say, well, we either went over or under. So I just want to go over a couple of things, like for this facility capital outlay. December, we had a thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar budget. But when May came, that budget was reduced to eighteen thousand.
Okay, so do you remember in April, I came to the board and you guys approved a revised budget? Those numbers changed for May because you approved a revised budget. And the revised budget went down for operating capital because we did have those one-time monies. And we were able to pay for technology things with those one-time monies. They were needed, a lot of it was COVID-related. And that took away from that budget because we were able to pay for it in a, a better manner, a more fiscally responsible manner.
Well, I think that's wonderful, but the only thing I don't understand is why change the annual budget? Why not just do the year-to-date and then the remaining balance? So you can see the exact difference instead of- Yeah.
You're always gonna revise the budget though, because adopted budget's based upon assumptions. I mean, you, you approved that before the fiscal year even starts and things change. So um, you revise the budget for what happened during the year. So that's why those reports change, because they're more accurate picture of the year.
And I think when, and that's what you're, you're looking at right now is a proposed budget. And as the year goes, it varies, and it's gonna vary monthly and quarterly. And so I think um, this is what Lindsay is saying, is that at that time of the year, this is what it looked like. But then, things changed and then you can allocate the different expenditures to different funds. And so it's a constant throughout, you're dealing with three different budgets all year long. It's the previous year, it's the present year, and then it's the future year through all that, that period of time. And so, and what Lindsay does is try and balance that throughout the year so that we've got, when we get to the end of the year, that surprises aren't there.
I know, I get that. It looks kind of like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, kind of what, when you're reducing the annual budget. Cause when you have a budget and you, you see that you're gonna, let's say, spend fifty thousand dollars, this is my budget for this item for the year. Whether you get money in to help pay for stuff, at least you can say, this was my budget, these are my expenditures, my year-to-date or whatever. So that's where it's making it difficult to follow this and get a really good picture of where we are financially.
Well, at the time that we had the adopted budget, we had no, we did the adopted budget for this year twenty-one. We had no idea we were gonna get federal money in. And why wouldn't we use the federal money instead of budgeted money, which takes away from our bottom line? Why wouldn't we use our funds more appropriately? So why would we keep that budget that high when we had other funding purposes that came in to apply it to?
I was thinking optics-wise, so then you can see the next year, like we, we budgeted way too high in this area. At least you could, at least see the initial budget there, you know what I'm saying? So then if you budgeted too high one year, over five-year period, you can say, well, we don't have that good money in there. I don't know, I missed that.
What was that, Lindsay? I'm sorry.
She said you can look at the adopted budget.
I mean, you can look at the adopted budget. When I, when I'm budgeting, I look at all of the budgets and I look at the last five years to budget to actual. And because of COVID, normally we would probably spend, spend that money in that budget area. But because of COVID, we got one-time money, and so we didn't spend that money. But I know in the, for the future, when we budget in that area, that budget has to go back up because we had one-time monies to help it.
Right.
So what, what I'm doing is helping our finances by using those one-time monies for things that were in the budget already, but were in need. So just because the budget's lower, that doesn't mean that the budget's gonna stay lower.
Right.
It for future uses, but we didn't not need it for twenty-one.
I, I appreciate what you're doing, I don't have that five-year history to look back at right now, so I'm, I'm just going by this last-
Right, and that, and that's my job, that's what I do, that's what I look at.
And that's what she uses a lot to make her projections and her assumptions.
But it, it's nice for us as the board members to see that too. I know it's your job, Lindsay, and I don't want to do your job, but it's kind of fun for us to see that over the five years where we've come from or where we're at, or, you know what I'm saying? Cause as board members, if we're gonna approve something, we need to, you can't just go on a wing and a prayer, you gotta kind of see what's going on.
It's nice to see a band that's higher.
And I think that's, that's what I rely on Lindsay to do that for me. And uh, and that's her job. And so when I have financial questions, that's a person I'm gonna go and she's gonna generate the report that will explain, answer my questions. Just what you're doing right now, you're asking questions, good questions. She can answer those because she works on it daily. And so that's a, a key position and, but what you really need to look at as board members is what is your general fund balance? That's your tool that monitors how's, how uh, safe or how uh, good the district is doing. And if you lose control of that, it's hard to catch up. And that's what uh, Lindsay, when she talks about being conservative, that's what she's doing. She's protecting that. And as a district, that's number one, and you've got to protect that or you're gonna be in SOD and then you're, you've got the state dictating all your funding and where every dollar is going. Then you don't have any options. And so that's what Lindsay, that's her job, and she does a good job of it. And so uh, it's hard for us to understand because we're not in the daily day of doing that. And, and it's allocations, and when it gets to the end of the year, then we look at. Uh, if we've got a fund bal, uh, fund extra in, in one area that can help out the other area, then that transfer is made. If it, we can do it by statute. We can transfer some things and some things you can't. And Lindsay is the one that dictates that. But I think what you're asking are good questions and um-
When I understand, that's prepared to do that. As a board though, we need to know so we can make educated decisions moving forward, like what do we want to spend the money on too? Like if we need to do um, repairs, if we need to do building, I mean, we need to help, if we think, hey, maybe we need to use more cutting back because we have a four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar deficit spending for this proposed budget, where can we make cuts? You know, I, yes, that's her job and I love that she's doing that, but then we as a board, we need to be able to make those decisions. Because she can't-
And Teresa, where are, where are you getting the four hundred and some thousand dollar deficit fund? We don't have that.
Well, I was going through here, if you take your proposed expenditures of eight million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four ninety-four and subtract, subtract your proposed revenues of eight million, five hundred and eleven, that's seventy-six thousand in the red right there. If you take the four sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars in proposed expenditures and you subtract the four hundred and thirty-five thousand proposed revenues for general, for food service, that's twenty-eight thousand in the red. If you take the three hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars of proposed revenues in community service and subtract the two hundred and forty-five thousand, six eighty-eight proposed revenues, that's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the red. And I, I can go on, but you start adding those up all the way down. Um, go, take the eight hundred and fifty-four thousand proposed expenditures for the special revenue, minus six eighty, that's a hundred and seventy-three thousand.
We only have two hundred and fifty thousand in total.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah, that we're in the red.
Yep, but we're using reserves to pay for it. So that's why you gotta be careful when you're looking at just one year, revenue minus expenses. Because um, I, what I was explaining with the general fund, the reason if, if you're just looking at revenue expenses in total, I have a four hundred thousand dollar roof project built in there. You take that four hundred thousand dollar roof project that we're using restricted monies for, we're not deficit spending. So you have to be very careful when you're just looking at the current year. That's why we look at the fund balance projections, um, that's the second document that's in your board packet. So we're not, the, yes, it shows that we're deficit spending, but it was for, there's a reason for that because we're spending down reserves in our LTFM for that roof project.
Okay, cause that doesn't show that on, LTFM.
LTFM, if you look at four hundred and fifty thousand deficit right there.
So that's for the roof?
Yes, that's a four hundred thousand dollar roof project that we gotta do. And that's what we talk about is when those things come, you know, if you spend your general or your fund balances down, then you're not able to do-
The only thing is that she knows it was for a roof project, but we didn't know it was for a roof project.
But that's her job, and so I think-
Well, I know, but-
And you've got to trust that what she's putting together, she's telling you is a basis of, of being credible. And it's, that's her job is to do that and, and then she brings those, then he brings that projects uh, to her and, and then as administrative team and as the board, then you sit down and you say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. We've talked about this four hundred thousand dollar budget, uh, roof project for some time now. And that's been on the books and it hasn't been expended. Uh, and now this year, we're looking at it this next year that we can do that.
I don't remember talking about it at our facility.
Yeah, we were talking about that, then he brought that in, what that's-
But I didn't know that we were gonna go ahead with that.
Well, I thought that was a decision we made. I, I, I don't know. I think that the, well, the funding is, is the funding there for it. And that's what she's taking the allocated funds for that project. So um, that's what she did along, and so I, we talked about this project and it should have been done this year. But we talked about that and we're limping a length, so we can get it done next year. And then we'd have with the LTF and we'd have it. But uh, that's her planning and, and her job is to put those funds together so that we can do that. And, and she uses her, her data that she's got over the years and so you know which, how the uh, funds are fluctuating and what is, is taking place. So um, it's uh, difficult to understand, it is for me, and, and so I know that, but um, and so-
Lindsay, I got just got one quick question for you. You're back on the ESTR, we, we were talking about ESTR earlier, ESTR funds? And you said extra, extra COVID time, what would that consist of?
Well, we had to hire additional food service people, that was not, um, was, wasn't in the plan because of having to prepare the meals the way we did. Um, there was additional um, support that we needed for students because with distance learning. Um, we all know that we're, that every school in the state of Minnesota is, um, kids are behind grade level and the numbers are worse than they ever have been with that, just because of the situation. Um, there is additional support services that need to be because there was an emotional effect on it. So there was, there's just a combination of all of that, um, additional time that happened. There was additional custodial time because there was increased cleaning that we didn't plan on, um, self-COVID shit. So it's a combination of all of that.
Okay, so that cannot be used as any kind of wages or like benefit bonuses for anybody? That money has to stay just for COVID stuff, correct?
Um, what, the, each, each allocation that we've gotten so far has different requirements. There, some of them are releasing, releasing their requirements a little bit and leaving it a little bit more open because they know that this is putting the district in a financial- Because they know that this is putting the district in a financial um hardship. So the restrictions are releasing a little bit, but the the first funds that we came out, they really needed it to be spent on. On things that were related to COVID and that's exactly what we did.
Okay, but as far as wages then or anything like that, if we can't use it for that.
It depends on the timing of the grants.
Depends on the situation, yep.
S- some of it you could and some you couldn't.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't want it on just general, we would wanna. Okay, so that we would want it to be used on our plan to balance our budget by using it on wages and salaries. Cause when those money goes away, the wages and salaries don't go away. Does that make sense?
Okay, well, right, so we can just say, okay, the teachers worked a little harder or extra this year, we're gonna give each a thousand dollar bonus. For all their hard work and efforts, we can't do that.
Um, well, one time money can happen as long as it's related to the pandemic at hand. Which that would be, so that would be just.
And like uh like she said, you know, each one of those grants have different stipulations. And so uh you had to use that as your your guide to what you can spend it for and what you can't.
Right.
And so uh but she's uh what she did mention the E S R three now. There's a little more freedom of that of how to use those. Because I think uh those funds are intended to supplement uh help for kids that are struggling emotionally, socially. And academically. And so uh so those funds are gonna be, some of those funds you can use for that those services, so. But again, that's, you don't wanna design a program. That you can fund it this year because you got E S R funds, but then the next year they're gone. And then you gotta end the program or you have to put it your on your own, so. It's uh every one of those things had different stipulations and there was several, and so. And that's what uh as last this spring has been unbelievable as far as her position is. Making sure that all the grants that are available have been applied, they met the deadline that. And we had to have it in by the end of the month, by June thirtieth, so she's been working with uh at uh every one of the districts she works with, so.
Any other questions for Lindsay?
So is she projecting surplus or deficit spending in the future here?
Lindsay, did you hear that?
I give a nine five.
State your question again, please.
Are you projecting any surplus or deficit spending from what you're looking at?
So like if you look at the unsigned where that's where our discretionary fund and that's what we need to look at and build up. That is a surplus of about seventy seven thousand.
You look on the unsigned there, on your.
Unsigned.
On your uh general fund. That's what you wanna keep an eye on. And so that's what she's did, she's making comment about.
So yeah, so that there, we're showing a surplus there where we need to be. But the reason that we're seeing a seventy six thousand dollar deficit spend is because of some things that um. Budgeted items that we're using our restricted reserves for up above that unsigned category. Like one, the obviously the big one I was talking about is the roof. Um, where um we have that budget at work. And um there are some other technology purchases um that are gonna be coming up based upon leases and needs. So looking at that budget again in the operating capital area, so things like that where we're leaving reserves for. But but I am projecting a surplus in that unsigned category and that's where, that's where um. We need to make sure we build that up to make sure that we have um a savings account. To try to simplify the savings account to make sure that we have the funds available to pay for our bills these months.
Is there any way Lindsay that we can find a way to get that community service fund down a little bit? Stand one hundred and forty five thousand in the red?
Yep, I agree, I agree, that's obviously been a topic that we've had over the last few years. Um, and unfortunately, the last couple, um, last spring and then this whole fifty year twenty one. And I'm not sure what twenty two's gonna look like, um, yeah, um, but that didn't help. Unfortunately, did not help us out um because of the fluctuations that we had because of the pandemic. But yeah, that's that is another area that what that we continually need to work at um to see what we can do. It's it's really hard to, um, we need that, we need a preschool program and um the state's really pushing it and and until they start. Wanting to fund that category, it makes it really hard, uh financial hardship on districts. So we gotta keep pushing for that to get funded for one and then look at other ways where we can bring in other revenue and reduce expenses.
Okay, thank you.
And I think a year ago, Derek brought in a budget for our early childhood program that was pretty much of balance. And the board elected not to go that route. And then so then they cut it back and so then that added to the deficit again.
The the tuition, right?
Yeah, the tuition, I'm saying tuition, yeah, preschool tuition, so you know, those are the things that uh.
It was increased tuition, yes.
That went to made up a hundred and forty five thousand, that went to made up the hundred and forty five thousand.
No, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that, but uh no, that isn't, that's because of what Derek had produced as a budget. Uh it was not that far off, so.
All right, any other questions for Lindsay? Otherwise, I'm gonna thank you Lindsay for speaking to us on your vacation time and hope you have a wonderful, wonderful rest of your week.
Good way to spend a vacation.
No problem, thank you so much.
Thanks Lindsay. All right, she can go and enjoy her time now.
Thank you.
All right, uh so number one, approve the fiscal year uh twenty two proposed budget. Motion is made by Bookdell.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bowen, any further discussion?
And remember, this is a proposed, it won't be long in three months and you'll probably have a revise coming at you. Uh simply because of the jet head revenue that the state, when they get, they have to have it done. We have to have a this in place by the thirtieth. And so here we're doing it with how many assumptions, the unknowns and um and we don't know. Uh and educate us hard, and come the fall, we don't know who walks through those doors. And uh and we can't predict that. And so then all of a sudden, the population changes. And whether it's special needs or whatever it is, we have to provide that. And so it's a constant of revamping and shifting and and covering the expenditures that we have, that we don't have a choice on. So schools, you get, you don't have the choice, well, our expenditures are going up, so we raise, bring in more revenue. Don't have that choice. And so that's what makes Lindsay's job difficult. She's putting out projections that there's a lot of assumptions with that. And like she says, she uses a five year history to putting that together. And uh it's a tough job, but again, this is a proposed, it'll be revised more than once. Uh but the other uh other thing that you need to watch as a board is when that audit comes out. The auditor comes in and they do a fine, an inspection of everything. And they look at everything very closely, so you watch for that. Uh when that's complete, they're the ones that are gonna tell you a lot about the district and so. And that comes, that they're done like in November and that's what you need to, as a board. Keep working with those people because they're the ones that are gonna tell you the financial position of the of the uh of the district. Lindsay's working with three budgets, three annual budgets uh at a time. And uh that's what makes it difficult with school funding, it's so. But I also think, you know, uh public education is very deep. And I've told you that before, I I think it's, we've got to figure out a way to fund it. Because it is cheap, but we got some needs needy kids and we need to provide for them, so.
I think one for me, well, as a finance committee, it'd be nice to have a couple more meetings to be in on some of that. Because we have one, we really didn't discuss anything, the second one was not a good one. And then now here we are, which we had Tracy and I and Teresa are on there and we really didn't have any input on any of this. So going forward, I think would be good that we actually have some meetings and go through some things together.
All right.
And that's an issue when you've got a business manager, it's only one day a week.
Yeah.
And that's the binary in right now, so.
That's why I wanted her to talk, but no, yeah, hopefully she'll be able to answer some questions.
I hope so, I hope so.
Sounds like she's got some experience, so that'd be good.
Yep, so I mean, that's gonna be a a good addition, I think, and so.
All right, anything else?
Thanks.
Hearing nothing else, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number two, approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three superintendent contract for Mr. James Menton.
So moved.
Motion is made by Bowen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bookdell, any questions or discussion? On the contract. Hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number three and four, we were um were taken off for Thursday, July first at seven thirty. So then we move to, excuse me, move to number five. Approve the COVID nineteen preparedness plan for summer, fall of twenty twenty one, enclosure number five.
This is what, it's just a list of uh what administratively that the the district will be looking at. And forming their staff committee and getting community input into moving forward with the. Hopefully, uh like I said, I hope the numbers continue going down as far as the COVID cases and they have been extremely in vaccinations. And so we hope that continues so that when the fall comes, we can get back to as normal uh schools. Well, we can and we don't know, but uh we'll see what it goes. But this is, first is just a fairness guide, the stuff we learned from this year. And then now moving forward with it, going into the next year and then looking at these other things you'll watch it. And that'll change as as the plan, as we get closer to the school year, so, okay? This is just a guidelines to start with, and so move forward to that, so. Questions on that?
We'll just have to change the contact at the end at some point. Unless you wanna be emailing you.
We'll we'll just be emailing you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
All right.
No biggie.
July one.
With change. All right, with that, um, need a motion to approve that. Motion is made by Bookdell, seconded by Benson. That's what I heard, so. Any other, any other questions about that? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay, motion carries. Number six, approve the vendor of the, for the property and casualty insurance, it's enclosure number six. Uh this is EMC Insurance Companies. And has been who we have been with um with the Johannes Agency.
Johannes, they've been a number of years uh with the personal property and casualty insurance. And um his recommendation this year is the grades were going up and that's, he said that's all over the state and not just be bold. And he said that's happening with it and and his recommendation was to raise our deductible. We're at a thousand and we thought for the two our side, we should go to, he bid out either a twenty five hundred or five thousand. And uh so I've been with Paul and then with Denny and Denny was skeptical of going to twenty five hundred, he thought that was uh or the five thousand. And so he recommended looking at the twenty five. And so the bid that he has in there is with the twenty five, which brings it to about the same as what it was in the past, and so.
Was it significantly less with the five thousand, you know?
Um, he didn't give us a five thousand, but.
Would have been fun just to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it might be worth it, we table that and then discuss that formally.
When does this need to be done? That's the thing.
Uh, July one is the is the is the time for the policies, so um.
Something that we can work for Monday? I mean, for Monday, something we can maybe work towards for next year.
Maybe we should not jump back this year. See all the twenty five hundred, Danny was really concerned if we're going to five, you're you're stretching it heat.
And that would take five thousand on his budget, but.
Yeah, he's gonna come up with a little dollars. And other and other things.
Which makes sense.
Right.
And so that's why I went to him.
So something, let's see how the twenty five hundred goes this year and then, yeah, maybe it's no big deal. You know, maybe it's no big deal to go up to five thousand for next year.
Yep.
Baby steps. Still need to.
So it's seventy seven thousand for them.
All right, so that is um the vendor. This is the property and casualty insurance, that's seventy seven. And then, so we have two, two items on here, so um I'm gonna make the motion to approve that property and casualty insurance, if I can get a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks. All right, so that was at seventy seven, which similar or probably very close to last year. Um, so all in favor say aye and and working towards hopefully maybe seeing what we can do next year and bring that cost down even more, so. All right, um, so with that, we'll vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number seven, so we're approving the vendor for the worker, workers compensation insurance. I know that's something that has been um worked on to try to to get that down lower. And I think they've done a pretty good job, um. So it's also the EMC Insurance Company through the Johannes Agency.
But it's a different.
Oh, sorry, AmTrust North, I read the wrong one, sorry, AmTrust North America.
And Paul gets uh he he gets, normally gets bids from three different companies and he's, the district has had EMC in the past. And but now he's worked with AmTrust North America as a as a firm, as an insurance company and for, he's over fifteen years. And it's been very satisfied and really, uh Colin Worth is pretty much, it's by the right of the law. Statutes aren't there as far as what qualifies and what doesn't, there's not a lot of leeway with that, so. He's very comfortable with that and it, that is an eleven thousand dollar savings. And so that was significant and that's why he thought we should change. And and so I think that would be wise to do that, and so.
I do know in the past too that he he has been very good with working with us to try to keep, keep that that number down. Giving good suggestions and programs that we can use to help our employees, so.
So moved.
Motion is made by Bowen, seconded by Bookdell, any other questions on that? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, uh moving on, number seven, actually number eight, designate the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two official school newspaper. It's enclosure number seven. Uh Renville County Register is being recommended as a designated official school newspaper for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
So moved.
Motion is made by Bowen. Seconded by Benson, any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay, motion carries. Number nine, approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two dairy bids, enclosure number eight. And it's recommended that the board approves Kemp LLC as the district's dairy vendor as well as to accept their firm bid for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Motion is made by Bookdell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bowen, any discussion or questions on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay, motion carries. Number ten, authorize business manager and or superintendent to sign all activity account contracts and approve blanket coverage for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Thank you, this is an annual, annual item.
So this is not being made?
No, no.
It's just that the, you know.
You just have to approve it. You just have to approve it.
You have to call the board and gather to approve it. It's, it's minimal.
We can do that, I suppose, but.
I don't think you want to.
Motion is baited by, made by Bookdell. I will second that. Any other questions on that? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number eleven, approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school lunch prices as free for all students provided by USDA funding. Thank you. Motion is made by Benson.
Bowen.
Seconded by Bowen. Who doesn't like free? Any questions or discussion on this? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number twelve, approve the MSBA membership for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, the, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year and MSBA policy service renewal for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-one school year. It's enclosure number nine. As with everything else, it's gone up a little bit. Um, thank you. Motion is made by Benson. I will second that. Um, it's even though things go up a little bit, it, we, we use MSBA quite a bit for any questions that we have, so I think it's worth it.
They're your, that's your organization and they do a lot of lobbying, which if you've been following legislature every Friday and I think uh, Wednesday they're having a, a big uh, phone call and and so take advantage of it and, and their conferences and so. It's good training. You mean that.
Alright. Anything else?
Enough. Sorry.
Oh, anyway. Any, anybody else have any other questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number thirteen, approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two resolution for the membership in the Minnesota State High School League. It's enclosure number ten. Motion is made by Bowen. Seconded by Bookdell. Any questions or discussion on this? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number fourteen, approve MRAA membership renewal for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two school year. Membership dues for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year is, the membership dues is seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Last year's membership was sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars.
So moved.
Motion is made by Ben. Bowen.
Benson.
Oh, man. Alright, and, and Benson will second. Thanks, that helps. Another good, good group to have in our corner here. They're working hard for rural, our rural education, so. Any discussion or questions?
Do we have to change the contact information on this?
Yes. Well, we've got, oh wait, that's High School League. That one has changed. Yep. So we will change that as well. Still you. Alright, with that change, um, let's vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number fifteen, approve the asbestos notification indoor air quality notice and the notice concerning use of pest control materials. It's enclosure number twelve.
So moved.
Nothing has changed. Just another thing that needs to be. Yeah. Motion is made by Bowen, seconded by Bookdell. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Alright, number sixteen, approve the student directory information. It's enclosure number sixteen, number thirteen. Um, we just, it's another thing that we need to approve before it can be sent out to the families. I don't know if there's anything major that has changed, Mr. Menton?
There's nothing changed on it.
Okay.
It's, it's the same as what's in, whatever's in the policy.
Oh, this is directory. I'm thinking about the, yeah, I'm look, I'm thinking about the student directory. That's what I'm thinking about.
People are, business or something calls for this and this is the information added directory.
I'm thinking the student handbook. That's the next one. Sorry about that. Thank you, Tracy. Motion is made by Bookdell, seconded by Benson. Any other questions about that? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number seventeen, approve the Bold Middle, Middle and High School Student Handbook for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. That's, if there's anything different on that one.
Interestingly, the only major addition was that last year we put in the student directory information and somehow it only got the title in there, so.
Well, it's a step up, right?
Yeah.
Alright. Can we get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion is made by Bowen. Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number eighteen, approve a fundraiser for the Bold BLHS Track and Field Team at Max's Grill on Tuesday, June first of twenty-twenty-one. Motion is made by Bowen. I will second that. Any questions or discussion on that?
What kind of fundraiser did we know? We donated We donated a portion of sales from, from three until nine for anybody that came in and mentioned the fundraiser and they raised five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Trace. Alright, um. What? Probably should, I suppose. Yeah, probably should. Alright, uh, with that, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Or abstain. Alright, thank you. Alright, number nineteen. This is our addendum and it's the designation of identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. Enclosure number fifteen. It's, it's an annual item. Obviously, it is changing because Mr. Menton will be the superintendent as of July one.
Is this something we've had before?
Yes.
So moved.
Yep. Motion is made by Bowen. Seconded by Bookdell. And any other questions on that? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote on that. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Alright. We have one um, acknowledge and accept gifts, grants and requests. We have one and so we have a resolution for acceptance of gifts, member. Benson. Introduce the following resolution and moved its adoption, whereas Perry and Nancy Yonkey have generously donated fifty dollars towards the Bold First Robotics Team. Therefore, be it resolved by this Bold School Board to gratefully accept these gifts. The motion of the adoption, the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member. Thank you. And upon a vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof. And so we'll just, we'll do a real call vote and why we, why? I don't know, but we're gonna do it that way, so. Alright, Mrs. Benson.
Yeah.
Mrs.
Aye.
Yeah, Mrs. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Bowen.
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Bookdell.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. The foregoing resolution was approved this twenty-eighth day of June of twenty-twenty-one. Thank you very much for the gift. And uh, coming to upcoming dates. So Thursday, July one, seven-thirty, special meeting right back here to discuss those two contracts.
I have a question, Jo.
Okay.
Um, on that same meeting, because I don't see anything on here what we're gonna do about Melissa's position. Maybe we should all say that same thing.
That's, um, maybe should've talked about that when we accepted her resignation, but what do you want us to do on that?
Well, you can have a discussion right now. If you want to discuss it and make a decision. Given the attitude of Jim, so.
I thought you would've had it right by the nurse or something. I just didn't think about it till after we're by it and I was like. Probably need to know what we're gonna do there.
Well, you, you, you've got.
Well, she has a, what, three and a half year term left.
You're gonna have to have a special election in November. And so the question that you can, do you want to advertise and uh, for a replacement that you would live on a point, you can do that.
Which would just be from whenever you appointed that person until December. Well, would it be until December? Because would that person take over in January?
Yeah, he'd take over, but you're, yeah.
So that person would be, if you wanted to do that, you would start, you know, you'd start, you know, you'd probably have. So yeah, I would think you'd have an application process and have people apply. Yep, and have interviews.
Or you had to do an extra election. You, I think.
This is, no, this is just to appoint somebody to fill the, the term.
I mean, we have to do that or can we go with six that it would be a special election?
No, we don't have to.
I think there was a resolution made the last time around that they actually had, instead of appointing somebody, they had to go back and actually re.
We, this is for the short, this is for a short term.
Right.
So, because we would also have a, we would have a November special election to fill that seat for the next three years. Starting in January.
It depends on, you, the, it depends on the long, length of the term that's left on this position.
If it was less than a year, we could leave it empty or we could just, you know, go through the, a process of appointing somebody. Having people put in applications, we would interview and we would decide who we'd want to fill that position.
Why wouldn't we just pick the next person, whoever that was, we move them up?
You can, I don't, you, I, you know, I don't know. You could do it that way.
You can do, you can, you could do that if you want.
It's been done multiple ways.
Yes, it has been, I guess. The last time.
Determination. There was one, Tracy and I did interviews. And then we didn't get selected to fill in the rest of that year and then we ran in the next general election.
Guess I'm going by.
Look at a timeframe now, you're talking end of June, by the time you advertise and you get the information out there and then you do an interview or whatever you're gonna do to select the person, you're almost to the election.
Why don't we just have the next person that was eligible and still that election had just begun?
That's a, it's safe to do that to me.
We have to have it in the special election anyway.
Yeah, you still have to have that.
So it would only be for.
That's what I mean. It's just a short, but why don't we just, or we can just go with six.
I'm almost happy with having a six-person board though, because with the, the dynamic that we have, that we're dealing with already.
Six-person board till, till the election and advertise and, and open up for candidates. Because what the, the thing that you can think about is that how long does it take for somebody to get in and become a board member? You know, you've got two or three months you're gonna have them active or, or, or whatever. And so is it better off as a board?
Who was the last person? Who was the next one in the whole thing? Who was the button, the next one up? Who would've been the person?
Mr. Dotson.
I guess I, I'm personally with, with board dynamics, I wouldn't mind sticking with the six-person board. And then whoever is elected in November, then they would start in January. I, that's, that's my opinion on it.
The times, timeline is short. And so you if you go into the election, then the person that wants to be in, on the board.
Well, I wanna think about it for a while. I don't wanna make this decision.
Is this something that we would vote on?
Well, the one thing I, I would like to make is a statement though, at some point. I'm just sorry, but I think at some point we gotta get over the whole, everything about either being friends with somebody or not friends with somebody. We're, we're a board. We can't always I, I know it's gonna be a personal thing, because once that name gets brought up, it's, it's a fucking hell, but it's like it can't always have to do with who people like and who people don't like. It's like.
I, I don't really think it was coming out. I'm just looking at, I would like six of us to work together and then let's bring somebody on in a special election and whoever that person is, then we're gonna work with that person. So that, I guess that's just what I'm thinking. I'm perfectly happy with working with six of us because I think we can all learn to work together and.
Well, it's already almost July, so by the time you bring somebody else on, it's only a beauty for, and, and they would probably run. If they're on, they probably run and maybe get on anyways and it wouldn't matter, but it's very possible that you would only be working with that person for a few months.
Right, if they didn't get elected. So, I don't know.
They did get elected.
Are we discussing this anymore?
Um, well, I need to go over the upcoming dates, because I'd like to do that.
You did.
So, well, okay, July twenty-sixth, regular school board meeting, August twenty-third, school board meeting. Now you can make your motion to adjourn. Okay. Alright, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Eight forty-six. Thank you all for coming in.